I'd like to call the March 4th, 2024 City Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Hey, Jeanette Santiago is online. Everybody else is in person. Well, had a chance to look at the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Motion by Counselor Holmes to approve the agenda as written. Any seconds? Second by Counselor Jacobs. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Thank you, Jeanette. Motion passes. Okay, we have lost a member of our council and she was a council president, so we need to appoint a new council president. Have any nominations?
Mayor, I will make a nomination. I think tenure and experience is important and that is certainly what Meghan brought and I think Counselor Miller would do a good job in this role, so I would nominate Counselor Miller.
Counselor Holmes nominates Counselor Miller to be council president. Any seconds?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Second app by Counselor Jacobs. Any discussion question? Yes, I should ask. You're good with that?
Bakes up a nomination. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Want to make sure. Okay, any discussion question? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Tyler. Public comment. This is a place on the agenda where the public is invited. Do we have any before I? I guess I won't read that if there isn't any. If anybody would like to speak, you can raise your hand and Susan will help you. Anybody online? Okay, we will close public comment and move on. We do have a consent agenda and on tonight's consent agenda is a February 20, 2024 City Council meeting minutes. After looking at the consent agenda, does anybody have a motion to accept the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve the consent agenda.
Council President Miller to ex-motions to accept the consent agenda. Any seconds?
A second.
Counselor Jacobs, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along. Okay. Ordinance 917 is on second reading tonight. Make sure I'm in the right place. We held a public hearing on February 20th on this request. The ordinance received a motion for approval as presented and the motion has been seconded. I'll read the ordinance title for the second time and then take a vote. We have ordinance 917, Adoption of the 2024 Scappus Parks Trails Open Spaces Plan and Associated Comprehensive Plan Text Amendments. Is there any more discussion or question? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries unanimous and we will move on. Okay.
I can do it.
Oh, do you have anything? We want to thank you, Lori, for the work on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It's time to really get to work.
And a little six.
Okay, we've seen this CGI video. We've been working on it for the last several months, made a couple of changes. Associate Planner NJ Johnson, would you like to take that away?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Let me get my screen share going.
Skip the first one this time, right? We've all approved it.
Can't do that. We'll have to see it twice. That's the council president. He agreed.
We're gonna have a lot of questions then.
Should have.
Had a high-tech update where we now have the audio from this computer. So this is the final presentation of the community video project that we've been working on with CGI Digital. The most recent changes include showing a brown butter bakery instead of Bamford Bakery. And then the other one being Scappus Festival instead of Scappus Adventure Fest. So we'll go through the videos, audio included. And this first one is the welcome video.
Welcome to Scappus, Oregon, with a friendly, small
Thank you.
Small-town atmosphere. Welcome to Scappus, Oregon, with a friendly, small-town atmosphere and a wide variety of attractions and amenities. Scappus has something for everyone.
Located 25 miles outside Portland, Scappus offers the balance of rural and urban living, with access to exceptional educational, cultural, entertainment, and recreational opportunities. Explore Chapman Landing for scenic views of the Volnoma Channel, or walk or bike along the Crownzy Trail, which follows more than 20 miles between Scappus and Vernonia. Scappus features the second-largest candle in the world, the 50-foot-tall peace candle of the world. The city is also home to the Scappus Airport, the second-most-traveled non-towered airport in Oregon, which sees over 60,000 operations every year. Whether you're raising a family, starting a business, or looking to be part of a community that looks out for one another, Scappus is ready for you.
Next is Quality of Life.
With a rural, small-town feel and access to all the amenities of an urban environment, Scappus residents enjoy an exceptional quality of life. The Scappus School District is dedicated to helping local students earn a well-rounded education and achieve their full potential while preparing them for college or a career. When it comes to higher education, the Portland Community College OMAC Training Center is a great place to start with apprenticeship programs in manufacturing. The city's beautiful parks offer endless opportunities to explore and connect with nature. The community comes together for numerous events throughout the year, whether it's movies in the park or the Scappus Festival, a regional event with performances, activities, and refreshments the whole family can enjoy. The Scappus Community and Senior Center is open to all, offering opportunities for bingo, quilting, gardening, and a variety of classes. No matter what you're looking for in a community, Scappus has everything you need to live well.
This next one is Economic Development.
Scappus is a fast-growing suburban city that maintains its strong community ties while developing the modern amenities of an urban area. The city is home to abundant natural resources that have sustained the community for years, along with available land and buildings for industrial development. From locally-owned businesses to larger operations, Scappus can accommodate the needs of many businesses and industries, including the Scappus Airport, the second-most-traveled non-towered airport in Oregon. The Columbia Commerce Center, a local industrial park, has sites available for development. Leading the way in high-tech innovation, research, and development is the Oregon Manufacturing Innovation Center, or OMAC, and their partnership with the PCC OMAC Training Center. Located on the north end of town, OXPO specializes in mega-transport solutions. Scappus works closely with many organizations to promote local quality of life and encourage further development in the area. The Small Business Development Center was also created to provide small businesses with all the tools they need to succeed. Whether you're starting a new business or looking to grow, consider bringing your business to Scappus.
One question I did have. I did have a customer, someone asked about OXPO. You know, we voted some planning changes in last year. Have they been doing stuff out there? I hate to make you speak.
So they've been approved. Let's see, they were approved two years ago. Their extension, they did request an extension of approval, which expires this fall. They are aware of that, so I did reach out to them recently. They did say they'd be submitting plans soon to build their new facility on the northwest side of town, so I'm hoping they're moving forward. Yeah.
Couldn't remember what they were doing.
This next one is History.
Scappus has a rich history. From the Native American tribes that called the Scappus area home, to European settlers, locals made a living from the rich fertile lands of the Scappus plains. Today, the city's past can be explored through the Scappus Historical Walking Tour, which features many of the city's landmarks. The Watts House was built in 1902 by James Grant Watts, one of the town's founders and the first mayor of the city. Now known as the Watts House Pioneer Museum, it's maintained by the Scappus Historical Society and listed on the National Historic Register. The Heritage Park Fountain is designed by Scappus-based artist Michael Curry. It features a stylized tree that represents the community's historic roots to timber. The Scappus Veterans Memorial in Heritage Park proudly honors the lives of our community's veterans. With a bright future ahead, Scappus continues to write its own story.
And then lastly, community involvement in organizations.
In our community, the value of community organizations improve our quality of life by the interests and spirit those organizations uphold. Community organizations provide opportunities for friends and neighbors to give back, get involved, and come together while creating a sense of pride for the city they all share. To explore volunteering opportunities, visit scappus.gov. And if you're looking to get involved in local family-friendly events, visit keepitlocalcc.com/events.
So that is the video package that we've put together. I want to thank all of you for your help and comments in getting this to where it was. We had, in addition to your feedback, we had a lot of feedback from Economic Development Committee that really shaped that chapter, and then staff made some revisions as well. So I think it's in a good place and I think it really recommends or reflects Scappus really well, and I just thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your work on this.
When we're looking, I guess we're looking to approve this. What are we approving? Like, is it a couple-year contract? Is it up there? Are we just approving to put it, to go through with it indefinitely and then as things come up, we can revisit it?
The motion could just be to put it on the website and advertise it. That, like, we've done the contract work. We've gone out for sponsorships of local businesses to support the project. So I think you could, you could be fine with just putting it on the website and then we'll market it on social media and all of our other avenues.
I would maybe, maybe in a year, look back and just know, you know, how has it gone? Have we heard any feedback, good, bad? Have we seen any, you know, how much traction, how many views, just something to get an idea if it's working? I'd like to see that maybe in a year or so. And any major changes? I mean, they seem to be able to make some changes there, but obviously we don't want to change it very often. I didn't see anything in there that would change much. I mean, if they did change from Scappus Indians to something else, that's kind of a major change. But I don't think there's anything would make me want to change it very often. Okay, so I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve the CGI video to either, you know, put on the internet or put on our website?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Jacobs?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the CGI video package as is today or publication.
I have a motion to accept the CGI video as is, to accept it, put it on our social media platforms. Any seconds? Second by Council President Tyler Miller. I'm gonna call you Grayson sometime. I know it, just by accident. Counselor President Miller. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, NJ. Appreciate it. Okay, we are now on to 20, New Business, 2024 Council Goals, Assistant to City Manager Isaac Butman. Ready? Take it away.
All right, Mayor and Council, thank you for having me here tonight. Before you are the proposed 2024, 2025 City Council Goals. So City Council met on January 27th with members of staff, including department heads and the then-city manager, and reviewed the goals from last year, worked through a exercise to build a shared understanding of where things were at with those, other areas where goals could be proposed and needed, and agree on a set of proposed goals to be presented back to you. You have received the goal-setting report, which kind of walks through that process, has all of the graphics from the retreat, and at the end lists out the goals. There are six overarching goal areas, which include developing a vibrant and diverse economy, enhancing livability, creating a safe city, developing a diverse park system for people of all abilities, planning investing in community infrastructure, and supporting good governance generally. And there are 22 objectives within that. So tonight, we're just looking for approval for those. Those will help guide staff over the next year in terms of major projects and where we allocate funding and resources. If there's any questions about that list or clarifications, that's also the time for. Any questions, I'm happy to address them. Do we, I do have a couple of department heads as well. Is there anything specific to the departments?
Counselor Holmes.
Yeah, thank you for your work getting this to this point finalized and before us tonight. So there are a couple of goals that are identified appropriately as being on hold. Do we have the ability to get movement on those? Say, something evolves with the branding, say, at the county level, and we want to tie into that. How do we?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think by listing it on the list and in on hold status, I think it kind of allows that. I think that even if that wasn't a goal and that opportunity was there, that would be something we take advantage of. You know, we do take advantage of things that happen all the time that aren't in the goals. Small grant opportunities, partnership opportunities, times to go and just interact with our other municipalities, partner on things like the potential trail project between here and St. Helens. You know, those things happen all the time. And I think, I think that's enough, you know, even if it wasn't there, I think we'd still take advantage. But this kind of elevates it a little bit. So things on this list are a little more elevated for staff through the year for us to focus on or helps, helps us elevate them in our workflow.
Is there still any budget allocated to work specifically?
If it's on hold, I mean, I think you'd have to ask the department head that would fall under.
I would think on that one, if we budgeted $50,000 in our budget, it's still there somewhere because we didn't spend it. But I don't know if we're putting it into next year's budget. I would assume that it really means you guys aren't going to do anything on it until we change or tell you something differently. Obviously, like on the Grabhorn one, you're not going to do anything on it, but if something, you're still looking at it. If something comes up, if there's an opportunity that you see we might want to visit, you'd bring it back. But you're not actively doing stuff on those hold ones right now.
I mean, we are, I think with that one, we're still mindful there's another grant cycle, potentially. Given Council's last action, that would be something we would have to bring back for conference and decide if that's something that Council wanted to work with. I'd imagine since it is kind of that pivotal point, it was something we definitely check in on, but that's a question for Dave. I think he's online.
Are you looking for feedback on that? I wasn't sure there was a question there.
Well, if I was wrong, if I had misstated.
Yeah, no, we're still moving forward with that. As I mentioned in the last council meeting, the Parks Committee is, still has this as a focal point. I think everybody does, so we don't, we definitely don't want to lose sight of it. I would anticipate a work session coming in the somewhat near future with the committee and council potentially together to talk about our next steps now that the master plan is complete.
I think 4.1 would lead to 4.2. I mean, if we, we sit down and prioritize, pursue funding, that might either kick 4.2 back on or it might say we're still good for now. But I think the next step is on, at least look, starting to prioritize projects and figure out going forward where we want to spend our time. Any other questions? I do like this. Appreciate it. One thing I had put on here, I wanted to kind of revisit, is talking about our committees. I don't know if we want to do it in a work session. I'd like some help or guidance on how the committees are working. The Parks and Rec Committee obviously was centered a lot around the Parks and Rec Plan, which is now done. So what do you guys want to see out of them going forward? And same with the Economic Development Committee, which formed a lot of out of the 100-year celebration. You know, what do you guys want to see? Since we didn't have a lot of time during our goal-setting, what do you expect, your expectations out of those committees? I'd like to maybe talk sometime in either a work session or something and look a little deeper into those. If we're getting what we need to out of them, do we need to change course a little bit or do, you know, or slow things down? I'd like to work on that.
Yeah, I think a work session to over the committees and kind of talk through them and everybody get on the same page would be good. And perhaps we should invite Chair for each of those committees as well. And you're, are you specifically talking about the two kind of standing committees, Economic Development and Parks? Or are we talking about budget and things like that too?
To me, those two, Parks and Rec, Economic Development. Because, yeah, instead of them trying to always find things to do or things, I'd like either us to come together and either find things that we need them to do or not.
Parks Plan, Master Plan, now that we've got that, that should help drive a lot of the work that they can get behind and help facilitate for us. I think as being the new liaison with them, I, that's kind of the mindset I'm going in in first meeting with them next, in two weeks.
Good. Same there, Jeanette, with the EDC. Oops, she just texted me. So, yeah, it would be nice to get with you and get a sense of where they need to go and what they need from us, because I know there's times throughout the year they're trying to find things to do or, but we want to give them direction and make sure they feel that we're asking them to do something that they can get done.
In the past, sorry, Ms. Mayor.
Go ahead.
In the past, we had discussions about what their scope of work was, because that was kind of undefined and it seemed like Council and the committees were not on the same page. So I think that work session could be used to make sure that we're all in agreeance on what their scope of work is going forward. Just to make sure that they're not doing things that we can't use. We want to be mindful of their time.
And staff's time too. We want to make sure that anything they're doing is, is good with us. Because if it takes staff time or money, then we need to make sure we're, or Jeanette does say she'd like to see the committees and council to come to an understanding and be on the same page as far as city goals. Similar. Okay, and you've talked to staff. Does staff feel good about this? They feel that there's direction enough for them to work on for the year? Is there anything, you know, and you'll come to us if there's things that are vague or they need answered, but staff is okay with?
My understanding is, you know, we did send this back out to all the department heads for review. There were some questions around six, a little bit, around the charter review and the DEI assessments, about clarification, making sure that those were or were not. So we left them on there for conversation. My understanding was that both the charter review and the kind of internal, starting with the internal DEI work, was something Council was in favor of, but we wanted to make sure that was clear since we're kind of adding a new category. But other than that, I think that there was agreement that these are all reasonable. I think with, as with everything, you know, we come back to Council for direction as needed, guidance. We try to interface frequently and let you know what we're doing and what we're working on. Expect that as normal.
And I think too, with working with an interim city manager, I don't want to put a ton of this on Larry at this time. And also, we'll be having a new city manager by the end of the year, that this kind of gets us through most of the year. And then we can revisit as we get that new city manager.
I think that's reflected with the project statuses and timelines being a little less complete than normal. That, you know, we haven't really worked through what that looks like. Some of these fall in the city manager's office. Some of these things, we will need to come back to get direction about timelines and kind of work with Council about where we're going with them.
Yes, Counsel President.
Regarding the committees and the work session that we're gonna have, how do you want staff to give you input? Because staff works a lot with the committees. There's been some things in the past that hopefully, that have been ironed out. We want to continue to improve on those things. How do you like that, that it has to interface with the committees to give you feedback so that we can ensure that that's discussed during this work session? Do you want that ahead of time?
Yeah, I would like as much information as possible. I do want as much coming through us. Because I don't want staff to have to do too much with the committees directly. I want them to be able to come through us and us to go through the committees and us go to staff. I mean, because I think there is sometimes, they're unsure what they're supposed to do, because if they're told, asked something by stat or by a committee, you know, has it been approved or are we okay with it as well? So I think I'd like as much information from them as possible. And I'll get with each, the staff that represents each group and kind of get with them and see what they think would work best as well. I don't know if that answers it, but anymore, let me know. We do have one on there, since I have you here, Lieutenant. The Safe City Invisible, those are goals that you look like are good for you guys as well and we can work together on? Yeah, we appreciate, I mean, the community engagement, you know, community outreach, you guys have been doing have been great in the last year or so. Appreciate that and expect that to continue. Thank you. Anything else? So I guess we do want to approve these goals. So are we looking, do I have a motion to approve the goals? It's presented?
Mr. Mayor, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the goals as written.
Counselor Holmes approves the 2024 Goals and Objectives as presented. Any seconds? It's Counsel President Miller, seconds. Any discussion, question? All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Wow. Moving right along. Thank you very much, Isaac. That's great. Really well. Okay, today is March 4th, so March, I'm on to the calendar already. March 7th, March 14th, we have a Planning Commission at 7:00 PM, followed by March 18th, a council work session at 6:00, followed by a City Council meeting at 7:00 PM. Thursday, March 21st, EDC meeting at noon, followed by Parks and Rec at 6:00 PM, and March 28th, a Planning Commission at 7:00 PM. Okay, looking for any city updates? We can definitely note that we, we are looking obviously at hiring a new city manager. And with that, we have to hire a firm, search firm to help. The deadline to accept applications is Thursday. So we'd like to have a special meeting potentially next Monday to review those search firm applications and potentially select a search firm. So we will know, is that something we'd like to put on the books now? Ask if everybody's available?
We would try to get out those proposals to you, hopefully on Friday. Copies, get them out to you. Look at those. I kind of made a mistake when we set up the deadline at the council meetings, but we hate to waste a whole week waiting for the next meeting. But hopefully you'll get those and one of them will stand out and it'll be a relatively quick meeting, I hope. See.
So we're looking at potentially maybe a 6:30 special meeting just to review search firm applications next Monday. And if we can, if you, give you a little bit of time, but if there's some really big things you can't make it, we can talk about it, but otherwise, if we can get enough of us here, online or in person, we're looking at next Monday night. Okay, thanks. Anything else?
I did meet with the fire chief today, addressing conversations. They were, they were mutual. A lot of discussion of urban renewal and other issues. It was good. I was very glad to meet with him and it was cordial. That worked out good. And the police department, I know we're gonna discuss it later, but I, we had made an offer to the, not the council made the offer, the city made, the city staff made an offer to the police association, the police union, asking them to extend the contract that we have now. asking them to extend the contract that we have now through the end of the year. Our expiration July, we asked them, would you extend that through January? In return, we offered them, and now, you would have to approve it first. We tentatively offered them a 10% increase in wages if they would do that. With the thought that they would, as we negotiate then, we had that, perhaps that 10% for that fiscal year, and discussing others wages after that. They rejected that. So now we're back to square one. Right now, the contract expires, uh, the first of, uh, the end of June. That's where we're at. And that's it.
And that does kind of lead into an executive session we're going to have here in a, in a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Lehman, Police Department, Lieutenant Flouellen.
Uh, good afternoon, Council. Brian Johnson, the Public Affairs Director, he's out right now, he'll be back on Wednesday, up in Alaska. Only thing majorally I have to report, I'm very proud to say we'll have a new recruit that'll be graduated from Oregon EPSST Academy in Salem here on the 29th of March. Will become a part of the Police Department, great guy, Jacob McFarlane. So, any questions right now, like Police Department? What I have for right now, Council, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, I'm going to give Jeanette a minute if she has anything to, to send me a text. Counselor Jacobs, anything tonight? Okay. We'll go Counsel Santiago, since she does everything tonight, just want to thank staff for their hard work on the items presented in today's meeting. Thank you, NJ, for working with the advertising company, and you did a great job, they did, and you did a great job on the videos. So thank you, Jeanette. Counselor LaFrenz.
Yeah, just briefly, so I went and met with the director, the county director of emergency management. Just to establish that connection, I know several of us on the council have expressed an interest in bringing in some of these county-level organizations to talk about things like emergency preparedness and management. So Larry's helping schedule something with, with Corey, get him on the agenda. He's really excited about reaching out. He's only been the director here at this county for about four months. So he's still establishing a lot of connections and partnerships with the local cities. And he had some really good thoughts on how the cities in the county can, can best be prepared to, to, to work in an emergency response and in partnership with county level. So looking forward, he had some good thoughts too related to, uh, the conversations around the Sheriff's Office and Scappus Police and what that might mean if you don't have your main point person, which is generally the Chief of Police. So there are some, some repercussions with those conversations, so, uh, that's it.
Great, thank you, Counsel LaFrenz, Counsel Holmes?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Miller, President Miller?
Um, I attended the February 28th Board of County Commissioners meeting, and there was one topic that came up that was interesting. I, I've never heard of this before, it's called CPACE, C-L-A-C-H-A-E. And it relates to ORS 223680 and 223685. And they had a, the commissioners had a briefing from Sarah Hanson, which is County Council. And Andrea may say her name incorrectly, Jerkowitz, the County Assessor. And just in a nutshell, it provides a funding opportunity, kind of a, I want to be careful what I say because I don't fully understand the details yet, and it's something that we can all look into. And the discussion, the county commissioner meetings are recorded, so I'm going to send everybody on council where they can go to, to watch the county commissioner's meeting, with the time that you can just skip to, to watch just that, that relevant section. But basically, it provides commercial prop, the way that I understand it right now is that it provides commercial property owners the ability to take out loans for seismic improvements and energy-related improvements for the, that revolve around green energy. And again, the way that I understand it and how it's different is that the county actually makes the payment to the, to the, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? The person that gave the loan, sorry, I'm blanking on the lender, thank you. Wow, such easy terms are hard for me tonight, that's not a good sign. But anyway, they make the payments to the lender, and the property owner doesn't make them directly. But I'll, I'll let you guys, I'll send you the information, and you can listen to it on your own, and it's something that we can look into. But Commissioner McGruder made it a point to nudge the city of Scappus to look at it. So you, you guys will hear that in the comments. Um, I don't think I have anything else. Uh, thank you for entrusting me to be your council president. Joe can never be absent. And I'm bringing you some airborne and some other things on a regular, make sure you stay healthy.
Caffeine.
Yeah, thank you.
That it? Thank you. Okay, I did attend the Historical Society meeting on Saturday, and they're doing a lot of good things. They've got some good volunteers there, they're excited about another Whoville. They went over their budget, and they're doing very well. They do need more members. So I was very excited to see the things that they're doing. The museum should be up and running, hopefully within the next month or so. And that'll be really good for kids and classes to come through. And they will be having booths or part of all of our, our Earth Day will be there, the festival will be out there. And, uh, so they'll be there for those as well. I too will have a phone call with the chief, Fire Chief, sometime this week, I think. And, um, that's all I have for tonight. So I am now adjourned in this meeting, regular meeting, we're going to go do, the city of Scappus will now meet in executive session for the purpose of ORS 192.660-2-D. This, uh, allows us to meet in executive session regarding labor negotiations. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. But that, at that time, we will end the meeting. So this meeting is adjourned.